Mr. Clerk, City Attorney. My name is Marquise Harris-Dawson, Councilmember for the 8th District and Vice Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee of the City Council. Our Chair is absent today. I'm serving instead. We're joined by members from the 9th Council District, Councilmember Kern Price, from the 3rd Council District, Councilmember Bob Blumenfeld. We have, as a matter of policy in this committee, that folks who sign up to speak on multiple items are allowed to speak at the beginning of the meeting. They can speak for two minutes, a total of two minutes, on all the items that they have signed up for. We are, we, now that this meeting has commenced, we will not take any more public comment cards. So if you haven't submitted your public comment card, it's late in the day. We have items, Mr. Clerk, items 2, 3, 4, and 5. If we could read those into the record.
Sure.
And prepare to dispose of those.
Item 2, Councilman, this is a development agreement between the city and Douglas Emmett. It's estimated at a value of $625,000. It's a mixed-use project located in CD-11. I believe the underlying action is to approve the city attorney prepar ordinance. Item 3 is a vesting zone change, Councilman. This is for the demolition of a two-story commercial building and the construction of a new mixed-use project located in CD-3. Item 4, Councilman, is a vesting zone change, again, a demolition of the existing structure and the construction of a new apartment building with 11 percent affordable units in CD-6. I believe this item is being continued, Councilman, item 4? It is. It's been continued for, I think, one week, Councilman.
Okay.
At the request of the Council Office. And item 5, Councilman, again, this is a zone change. It's for a new mini-mart located in CD-12.
All right. Thank you. So let's take up the matter of, of agenda item number 4. If there's no discussion on that one, we'll continue it for one week. And then items 2, 3, and 5, if there is any discussion, Mr. Blumenfeld.
Chair, I'd like to call item 3 special. Wanted to insert a change in the parking.
Okay. So we'll take up items 2 and 5.
Sure. Item 2, Councilman, I think it's the city attorney prepar ordinance that is ready for your approval. And item 5 is a zone change ordinance located in CD-12.
And so if there's no discussion of either of those, we'll approve those on consent?
Yes, Councilman.
Excellent. And now we'll go to item number 3.
Yes, sir.
And hear from Mr. Blumenfeld.
Great. Thank you. If you want to lead into it, okay. So this is a project that's moving forward, has, and it's in my district, has to do with revitalization of downtown Reseda, something that we've been working on. It's a, it's a good project. The Reseda Neighborhood Council has been a great partner in seeing Reseda revitalized and in, in supporting this project. But there were some negotiations on this, on getting this to the finish line. And we have a project that the community supports, but the City Planning Commission, with good, good intentions, removed some of the parking that the community advocated for. And, and that, that parking was part of what closed the deal with the community to get folks to be supportive of it. And it was agreed to by the developer with the, with the neighborhood council before they agreed. So there was, there was agreement in the community and peace in the community, and everyone wanted to support it. So what I'm asking for is that we restore the, the parking conditions that were removed in planning and get it back to the place where both the developer and the community supported it.
Excellent. We're going to hear from staff.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Just planning staff here, happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the project.
Excellent. So, Mr. Clerk, if there's no other discussion, we can include that amendment?
Yes, we'll approve it as amended, as reflected by the Councilman's request.
Excellent. Thank you. So without any discussion, that'll be the order. Do you have a public comment? I think he's maybe the applicant for the developer. So, Mr. Clerk, I have a card on item number 5 that I overlooked, so I want to call that person up.
Okay. Very good. We'll open it up again. This is in CD-12. It's a zone change. It's for a new mini-mart in Councilman Englander's district.
Excellent. So, representing Northridge Oil, Mr. Ben Steckler. My apologies, Mr. Steckler.
No problem, sir. No problem at all. We're actually just here to answer questions in case any are brought up in support of the project. I submitted the card just in case.
I don't think there were any questions from the committee, so unless you have something for you that you want to add, I think we're, we're good to go.
No, sir. We're thankful for the work that the city's done in, in getting us this far and just looking forward to finishing the project.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, Mr. Clerk, now we'll go to item number 1. Sir, do we have, do we have to take this up again? Okay. So we have to consider this item again, and hearing no discussion, it'll be approved on consent? Item number 1, Mr. Clerk?
Item, item 1, Councilman, this is the Director of Planning's weekly report.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Chair Harris-Dawson.
You can reclaim your time since your mic wasn't on.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Harris-Dawson, members of the committee. Vince Pettoni, Director of Planning, a few items to bring to your attention. One of them is that we've been working as a department on a proposed permanent supportive housing ordinance. So that is an ordinance that, that will hopefully help facilitate the implementation of both measures HHH and H that were approved by voters in the County of Los Angeles and the City of Los Angeles regarding homelessness as well as, as housing affordability. So we're hoping to have a draft ordinance released in the next few weeks. That'll be released for a review period of the public for about 60 days. It'll go through a process with the, being heard by our City Planning Commission for recommendations, then it'll become, then it will become before this body, for this body's formal action prior to City Council. So we're very excited about having this released because of the importance of dealing, of the city addressing homelessness and near homelessness in the city. So we think this could really help. This is something that we can do as, through our planning and zoning rules to help out with that. So just to give you a preview, and we'll be reaching out and chatting with a lot of Council offices regarding that. The other issue is just, just an update on our last City Planning Commission meeting. They had agendized an item and had a discussion about delegation of authority. There's a provision in the city charter where they can delegate certain authority to the Director of Planning when it comes to the approval or recommendations or regarding ordinances, amongst other things. It's been a tradition of the City Planning Commission dating back to 1965 that they delegate to the Director of Planning fairly minor modifications to ordinances after they've been heard by the City Planning Commission as they've gone to the Council and they get drafted for form and legality. The City Planning Commission voted to revoke the delegation of authority in a specific instance, and that's the signed ordinance. So they voted to take that action on Thursday. Separate from that, under the Director's Report, we will give them an up-to-date in terms of planning actions or items, usually development projects or ordinances that have been heard by the City Planning Commission and been acted on by Plum. When we gave them an update of a project on, that is actually the 10th Council District that the Plum acted on, I believe it was last week, they had a discussion about that. It was a project, I believe, near Ethan Oxford. And it was, they voted to agendize on their next meeting on August 10th to also do a narrow delegate, revocation of the delegation of authority on that particular item. It's in the 10th Council District, and we've apprised the 10th, 10th Council District of, of the issues, and they're fully aware of that. So that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Any discussion, members? Hearing none, we'll move that we accept the Director's Report. Where does that leave us on the agenda?
Now it'll be item 6, Councilman, which is, item 6 is a cultural heritage commission report to designate Orange Julius as a historic cultural monument. I believe there's a request to continue this item.
Yes, there's been a request to continue this item to August 15th. There's no discussion on that. We'll continue the item. Hearing none, that'll be the order. What's next?
Next item, Councilman, is item 7, which is an appeal by James Childs. This is a vesting tract map for a subdivision of seven small lots in CD-8. I believe the appeal has been withdrawn, Councilman, and therefore we can simply deny the appeal.
Yes.
Terry Kaufman, MCA City Attorney's Office. The issue with the withdrawal is under the municipal code, section 11.5.10. Those withdrawals have to be done before 10 days before the hearing, and so this came in afterwards, so you can just take your action on the appeal and if you want to deny it.
So inasmuch as the application has been withdrawn, we need a motion to deny? Inasmuch as it has been withdrawn, we need a motion to deny from someone?
So moved. So moved.
Second. Hearing no objections, that'll be the order. Next?
Next item and the final item, Councilman, there's two appeals by Roberto Masariegos and Diana Kessler. This has to do with various land use entitlements for a, a new hotel located in CD-13. Councilman?
Yes, sir.
A question has surfaced. If you have any cards for multiple agenda items?
I have no cards for multiple agenda items. I have no cards for any other agenda items, but I have plenty of cards on number 8 to make up for that.
Thank you.
But we, I closed it a while ago, so. Thank you. So some people, some folks might have submitted cards after we closed. It appears to be the situation, so we just, we're now down to number 8.
Yes, Councilmen, I, I've read it into the record, so.
Okay, so do we have planning staff present to apprise us of a report on this matter?
Item 8 on the hotel.
There he is.
There he is.
Good afternoon, committee members. Jordan Turner, Department of City Planning. Before you, it's an appeal of a commission action for a zone change, conditional use for alcohol, zoning administrations, zoning administrators adjustments, and site plan review for the construction of a new 21-story hotel located on the north side of Sunset Boulevard between Ivar and Coenga. The project is about, as mentioned, 21 stories, 275 guest rooms, and will contain about 1,900 square feet of commercial retail on the ground floor. Also, the project includes 135 spaces, parking spaces within a four-level subterranean garage. There were previously three appeals for the project. One has been dropped. The two appeals before the committee revolve around the adequacy of the SEQA document, the mitigated negative declaration that was approved by the City Planning Commission.
No, go ahead.
Staff has reviewed the responses to the repeal and the responses to appeal and has found that the commission acted within the guidelines of SEQA and that all impacts of the project could be mitigated. There is some slight changes that the department would like to make to the conditions of approval. Specifically, we'd like to amend the alcohol-related conditions of approval as submitted to the Council by CD-13, and also to amend condition 43, see the indemnification language, and change the amount of indemnification from $25,000 to $50,000. In conclusion, staff finds that the commission acted within their jurisdiction, that the project will not have a significant impact on the environment, and recommend that the committee deny the appeals and approve the related entitlements. And I'm here for any questions.
And your, the, your amendments have been submitted to the clerk in writing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. I have a card for the appellant. The appellant gets a total of five minutes to speak. I have two cards marked Appellant Rep. One is from Roberto Masariegos, and the other one is from Gideon Krakov. So between you, you all have five minutes.
So just to verify, Councilman, that there's two appeals on file.
Oh, so there's two appeals, so they get five minutes each?
Yes, there's the Roberto Masariegos and, I believe, Diana Kessler.
Okay, so I have, I have Mr. Masariegos and another person that says they represent Masariegos?
His attorney. So Mr. Masariegos' attorney is Mr. Krakov.
Okay. And so if Ms. Kessler is here, we, she would get five minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Kessler? All right. So let's get started, and we'll figure out the other app, appellant. Thank you.
Chair Harris-Dawson, Members Blumenfeld, Englander. It's always an honor to speak here, one of the most beautiful rooms probably in our whole city, City Attorney, planning staff. My name is Gideon Krakov. I'm the environmental and land use lawyer for the appellant Masariegos. And you'll hear from many others today concerned about this project, because as we build out our city, as we grant the special land use changes, like those requested for RD Olson today, they want to ensure a Los Angeles where they can work and afford to live. Today, as we take land that could be residential amidst a housing crisis and use it for fancy hotels like this, they are opposed unless the project truly benefits the community. And does this project satisfy that standard? This project does not, and we urge you to grant the appeal. To begin, the project, of course, is not by right. RD Olson seeks numerous discretionary approvals, zone change, CUP, zoning administrator adjustment, a bunch of special zoning entitlements from you. Therefore, numerous special findings are required, and I pass this out for you today so you can see. Does public necessity, convenience, and general welfare require this project? Is the project consistent with public health, welfare, and safety? Are the impacts overridden by other social, economic, or physical considerations? Chair, Councilmembers, you have discretion to say no unless all those special findings can be made. Next, you must accept a shortcut mitigated negative declaration for this project under the SEQA law instead of a more thorough environmental impact report. This is a huge project, 21 brand-new stories tall, hauling away 60,000 cubic yards of soil right in the middle of congested Hollywood. This is no Pisher mini-mall or adaptive reuse of an existing building footprint, but because the city and RD Olson take the MND shortcut, what's called the fair argument standard applies. And that's the last slide. This is a low threshold favoring more environmental review than what you have before you. In the appeal, which is quite comprehensive, we have expert testimony on environmental issues showing the MND is deficient. Extensive, expert testimony in multiple letters, the traffic impacts, including likely significant backups on Sunset and Coenga, are ignored or masked by improper analysis. That the greenhouse gas from all the projects, 2,200 daily car trips, is outdated in light of the state's brand-new climate goals. I know a lot about this topic. I'm currently litigating the GHG issue at the Court of Appeal. When you take a Jack-in-the-Box and build a 21-story hotel on top of it, you must properly impact, analyze all the impacts of that change. That RD Olson didn't do all it could do to sample whether there were leaks from the former dry cleaners located on the site. That RD Olson and its shortcut MND failed to include all feasible mitigation, including traffic improvements in the area. This violates the fair argument standard. It's no stretch, Chair, Councilmembers, that for a project of this size in this location, you need an EIR. It's common sense, and the appellant respectfully insists that this be done right, otherwise grant the appeal. And then there's the land use findings. We've given you pages of comments again on this. Inconsistencies with the Hollywood Community Plan, redevelopment plan, failure to follow the applicable old planning rules, taking away land that could be used for housing, no owner-participation agreement, no disclosure of the quality of jobs offered and wages during the operation phage, phase for folks like HRE-11 that are here before you. So to sum up, the question is whether the required land use findings, and again, you have them in front of you, on general welfare and the economic well-being of our city and its residents and workers can be made, and whether the special zoning favors for RD Olson and its shortcut MND are appropriate. The appellant and the commentators, like the other appellant and the hotel workers who were here today, who make the city function every day with their hard work, they say no. Respectfully, based on the whole record before you, you cannot find that the benefits of the project outweigh the environmental and other costs. You have discretion, obligation to do a searching review, grant the appeal, deny the land use favors, send this project back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Krakov? Do you have, is that a written argument?
Yeah, we have the, Councilmember Englander, thank you for the question. We have the appeal and supplemental expert testimony that all was in the record before you today.
Well, we have all that, but I mean, everything you just read. I didn't know if you actually are submitting that for the record?
Just my oral comments, but I can print it up and sign it for you if you'd like later.
Well, if you're willing to submit it for the record, that's great.
We will. Thank you, Member Englander.
So there's a, Mr. Clerk, I believe there's a second appellate? Second appellate?
Yes, the second appellate, Councilman, is Diana Kessler, and Mr. Dela Cruz from Manat Phillips is the attorney.
So Diana Kessler? Is that you?
That's not me.
Okay, well, we, we got to hear from Diana Kessler.
Hi, I'm Victor Dela Cruz, representing the LA Film School.
You're representing who?
The, is this working? The Los Angeles Film School. I represent Diane Kessler.
Okay. Got it. Five minutes.
All right. Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'm Victor Dela Cruz with Manat Phelps and Phillips. I'm here representing the Los Angeles Film School. As some of you know, the Film School has a quarter-million-square-foot campus, most of which is concentrated in two high-rises a mere 50 feet from the proposed project site. Approximately 2,300 students attend the school, and as one of the nation's leaders in the arts of filmmaking and film production, it is one of the key pipelines for LA's entertainment industry. It goes without saying that the Film School is a noise-sensitive use. The campus includes a 4,000-square-foot soundstage, multiple recording studios, a dubbing stage, media editing labs, sound design labs, and instructional theater spaces, all of which require appropriate mitigation in connection with the construction of a 21-story, 232-foot high tower with significant subterranean excavation. We want to be clear that the Film School welcomes the revitalization of Hollywood and has worked for nearly two decades with community stakeholders on its continued improvement. The vitality that the Film School has created at this intersection is what made this hotel project possible in the first place. Unfortunately, the project applicant's MND paid little attention to noise issues or frankly any other issue, and the comment letter we have submitted today lays out the deficiencies that are in that document. One of the easy issues should have been construction noise. Most developers we work with try to address the impacts they create on sensitive receptors ahead of time. As you may recall, with development proposed next to Capitol Records and other sensitive receptor in Hollywood, admittedly, it isn't always easy, and disputes do arise. But generally, the two sides do get there and make a meaningful effort to listen to each other and arrive at compromise. Here, there seems to be a complete disconnect on what the applicant's obligations to its community are. So the film has gone it alone. It hired its own acoustical engineering firm, AES, the same firm that assisted with USC, Columbia Square, the Wilshire Grand, et cetera, to evaluate what impacts the proposed project would have on the buildings, equipment, and various instructional spaces. Suffice it to say that our client was highly disturbed by the results, and my colleague CJ Laffer will attempt to walk you through the various deficiencies in the applicant's noise studies. Absent appropriate mitigation, the Film School will have to explore its own soundproofing of the buildings, as well as the relocation of key facilities to other properties in Hollywood, and this will come at tremendous expense to the Film School, not just financially, but operationally. Had this applicant prepared an EIR as it was legally required to do, we probably wouldn't be here today. We would have, through public comments and the final EIR, probably arrived at adequate mitigation through the city. Since no EIR was prepared, we have attempted to informally negotiate with the applicant on appropriate mitigation measures and/or assistance in defraying the Film School's expenses, but those efforts have all failed. And today, we are simply looking for your help. Since this applicant believes it's going to be sued anyway, it feels no need to spend a penny addressing the Film School's very legitimate concerns. But that's not how planning should work, and we respectfully ask you to take a hard look at our noise issues and not approve this project unless they first appropriately address the Film School's concerns. And with that, I'm going to transfer to CJ Laffer, who will address the specific deficiencies in the document with respect to noise.
Excuse me for one second, Mr. Chair, if I could. Sargent, if I can. Clearly, Mr. Herman is out in the hall making what appear to be, is it a goat? It's a goat, I'm not sure. Goat? We'll go with a goat. Noise is every time the door opens, which is disrupting this meeting. If he continues to do that, I'd ask that he be escorted out of the building. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'm CJ Laffer, also with Manat Phelps, on behalf of the Film School. As we explain in our letter, there are numerous flaws in the noise study, which renders the analysis inadequate. First, the applicant has clearly doctored the numbers. In August 2016, they found that there was a decibel level of 65 along the boundary of, with our property. Somehow, by April, that number was doctored to 70 without any subsequent testing. It's one of numerous inconsistencies and false assumptions. Second, the analysis fails to properly identify the location of sensitive uses. The analysis assumes that construction's 160 feet away from our client's sensitive studio. In fact, it's only 70 feet away. This inflates, artificially depresses the assumptions about noise impacts by seven decibels, which renders the actual mitigation that's volunteered inadequate. Speaking of mitigation, the supplemental analysis provided by the applicant acknowledges the failings of the MND. While the 16-foot construction barriers are a good start, they're clearly not enough. But the applicant hasn't committed to mandatory mitigation measures. He simply wants to volunteer some measures that may or may not actually address the impacts. Other measures are entirely illusory. For example, measuring the impacts of sensitive receptors and specifying thresholds without any commitment to actually stopping work when impacts exceed those thresholds. Lastly, the mitigation measure for a barrier fails to account for the fact that that barrier could open at any time, and the applicant is only willing to close that barrier when feasible. They've failed to evaluate what happens when that barrier is open and what happens if, in fact, the temporary sound wall is not installed as promised.
Thank you so much. We have additional speakers, a number of additional speakers. Remember, you all have a minute to speak each.
Councilman?
Yes, sir.
I believe the applicant gets to speak as well?
I need an applicant card, and I have a note here.
The applicant has indicated he submitted a card in the back.
All right.
Fred Gaines, I think?
I have, nope, this is not the applicant either. Oh, yeah, here we go. Fred Gaines.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman?
Yeah, that's right.
We ready? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, honorable members. Fred Gaines of Gaines and Stacy, on behalf of RD Olson Development, where the applicant for this project. I have with me today, the entire team is available to answer any questions that you may have, and that includes Claire Jaeger from our traffic consultant, Shane Parker, our, the SEQA consultant, Steve Martin, not the wild and crazy guy, but the acoustical engineer can talk about noise issues. Greg Viegas is the architect, Donna Tripp from Craig Lawson has done planning and land use. Ira Handelman from, has done our outreach, and Tony Warzek from RD Olson Development. They're all here today. I was going to walk you through this handout, which is, which should be in front of you, tell you a little bit about this project, because it's really a spectacular project for Hollywood. This is the Jack-in-the-Box site at Coenga and Sunset. For some of you like me who've been, who've been active in Hollywood sometimes, late at night, Jack-in-the-Box is great, so there's a tinge of sadness, but this is really an incredible gateway to Hollywood, the entire end cap of Sunset, Coenga, and Ivar, across the street from Amoeba Music, from the Arc Light, the Cinéramon Dome, the CNN Building. And we have developed, working closely with the community, with planning staff, with the Council Office, a beautiful 21-story building with an Art Deco design that really highlights sort of the, the old golden days of Hollywood. It's 275 rooms, four levels of underground parking, parking in addition to code, that will allow some public parking for, for the area, as well as all the parking necessary on-site. You have a site plan here that shows the ingress You have a site plan here that shows the ingress and egress from Coanga, uh, through the, uh, front lobby, uh, you know, uh, front door area into the underground parking, as well as the truck, uh, off of Ivar, the truck, uh, service, the area that's been carefully designed and approved by the Department of Transportation. Um, you can see some of the perspectives, what it'll look like along Sunset and Coanga. There'll be some dining outdoors along the street, as well as really spectacular architecture right in the heart, uh, of Hollywood. Uh, and you can see it's consistent with a number of the other buildings along Sunset Boulevard, some that have been there a while, others that have been recently, uh, approved. The project has a number of public benefits that we've worked closely with, uh, some of our community partners, with the council office on, uh, including, not to say the least, TOT tax. Um, this is expected to be about three, three-plus million dollars a year, $30 million or more over 10 years in transient occupancy tax, uh, from this project, as well as, uh, we've agreed, worked with Equality California with regard to a local hiring program, worked with the Chamber of Commerce and Neighborhood Council. Uh, we've agreed to off-site streetscape and public garage improvements to contribute to those, and scholarship and internships with, uh, Hollywood High School, which was a request from the Neighborhood Council. By the way, I should mention, there's a crowd outside that can't get in, and one of the people that can't get in is the president of the Neighborhood Council, uh, Alvina Beck, and so I want to make sure that she gets in to talk to you. I think she has some priority to be able to, uh, to do that. What you've heard today, that, by the way, the jobs, uh, we expect several hundred construction jobs during a one-to-two-year construction process, and, uh, between 150 and 200 permanent jobs, uh, on the site once the hotel is in operation. What you, your, your approvals were previously described to you as special land use approvals. We do need a zone change here, but only because, uh, there's a D restriction, which says 4.5 to 1 is the normal FAR, allowed up to six with a special approval, which is exactly what we're doing here. We're going to six. So it's actually talked about in the zoning, does require the zone change, it's consistent with four or five projects that have been approved within the last three years, uh, in this, in this area. The only, there is a, um, exception to allow, uh, to allow an encroaching into a 20-foot setback, which really should only apply to residential projects. Hotel is considered residential. All of our neighbors here are commercial. There's no residential, uh, within, uh, over 700 feet of this, of this site. We ask for CUP, for, uh, CUB for alcohol, although there's no bar on-site, but alcohol would be served in the restaurant and the meeting rooms, uh, and allowed in the minibars in the rooms. And then you have a, um, a site plan review because of the, because of the size of the project. That's all that we're asking for here. It is actually completely consistent with the general plan for the area, the community plan, uh, and with the zoning itself, which talks about allowing six to one in, in the appropriate circumstance, with all the findings having been made here by staff and by your planning commission. So what you really have is a sequo challenge, and a sequo challenge by two, uh, appellants, and, uh, that'll allow you to, uh, ask questions about it at the, at the appropriate time. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
Appreciate your support for the project and for the planning commission's recommendation of approval.
Thank you. I have Rick from Equality California. Jane Wishan from the Stonewall Democratic Club.
Good afternoon. My name is Rick Zuber, and I'm the Executive Director of Equality California. While we don't take positions on land use projects, based on our history with R.D. Olson and discussions with the company, we've concluded the claims that the company is anti-LGBTQ not to be accurate, and as such, these claims are not a valid basis to oppose or take positions on the project. We have a history of positive engagement with R.D. Olson. One of our board members, an out lesbian, is one of the company's outside lawyers on matters unrelated to this project and knows the company well. They have contributed and participated in our events and sponsored the Orange County Pride. The company has confirmed to us that they have made no financial contributions to Legatus or any other LGBT groups, unlike folks like Chick-fil-A and Tom Shoes and folks like that. There are no contributions, and they have LGBTQ people in their senior management ranks. In addition, we've asked the company to consider, and the company has indicated to us, their commitment to implement both leadership development and a local job program aimed at expanding employment opportunities for LGBTQ with a focus on transgender people at the hotel.
Thank you.
And we indicate our willingness to work with them.
Thank you. You've submitted a letter to us, Krik.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jane Wishan, and I'm the Political Vice President of the Stonewall Democratic Club. Stonewall is one of the oldest Democratic Clubs in the country, focused on equality and rights of the LGBTQ community, and remains an important voice in the community. Several months ago, we were informed that a developer who we were told was anti-LGBTQ was planning a major hotel project in Hollywood. We took those concerns to the council member. He explained he'd heard the same rumors and that they were unfounded. He also laid out preliminary plans for a jobs pipeline for the LGBTQ community to be associated with the hotel and with special emphasis on our trans brothers and sisters. But we didn't stop there. We met with representatives of the developer, R.D. Olson. We researched Olson and its LGBTQ employee relations and put out a general call for examples of bias, real or perceived, by Olson against LGBTQ people. We found no evidence of bias. To the contrary, we found that Olson supports their openly LGBTQ employees. Based on our investigation, particularly in light of the jobs pipeline Olson has agreed to create, we believe the project will benefit.
Thank you. Mr. Chris Robinson, CD 13. I'm, oh, you don't want to go in the order that they just asked me to put you in? Okay.
Uh, Councilman, I think there was a reference to a Neighborhood Council representative that wanted to speak.
One more time?
There was a reference that a Neighborhood Council representative wa-wanted to speak on this issue. I think she's present, but I'm not sure if she submitted a card or not. She did. She's from the Neighborhood Council.
Come on up. Tell us your name.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, there's no community impact statement on file.
There is no community impact statement. Okay, so that means one minute? Yes, okay.
Hi, my name is Alvina Beck. I'm the president of Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council. We did hear from R.D. Olson about this project, and we did move to support the project as written. In addition, the project, um, did commit to a $1,000 scholarship for our high, uh, high school, and also two paid internships, uh, for, that the, the monies from the project would bring in. So we found them to be really supportive, and, uh, we support this project. We did attempt to, uh, submit a, uh, a community impact statement, but I'm not sure what the disconnect was. But we did happen to write it, and it is here.
So if you haven't, we can get it, we can make it a part of the record today?
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, uh, Mr. Cleve Jones. Rachel Rose Lucky.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. My name is Cleve Jones. I've been an LGBT rights activist for over 45 years and an organizer with Unite Here for the past 12 years, working mainly to build coalitions between labor and the LGBT community. I'm dismayed by the R.D. Olson Development and R.D. Olson Construction Companies. These developers of the Hollywood Ivar Gardens Hotel were linked, uh, quite clearly by their president, Bill Wilhelm, to Legatus, a virulently anti-gay organization that publishes articles supporting conversion therapy and seeks to overturn marriage equality nationwide. After we exposed that connection, uh, the gentleman, uh, ended his relationship with that organization, and they've apparently cut a few modest checks. But, uh, our union brings people together. African-American clergy, developers, hotel owners, neighborhood leaders, hotel workers. We fight for fair wages, safe working conditions, and together, we address the most important issues facing our community: housing, job training, and discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Smith, you're next.
Hi, my name is Rachel Rose Lucky, and I'm one of only eight openly transgender elected government officials in the country. I would like to echo everything that the previous gentleman just said, and I would like to add one additional thing. I vowed on December 5th in an open press conference that I would physically chain myself to a bulldozer to prevent this project from going forward. This project is an insult to the LGBTQ community and should not be allowed to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, after, Mr. Smith, we have Fatima Murrieta.
Good afternoon, Robert Smith, Painters and Allied Trades, Political Director. Uh, I thank the developer for looking to the Building Trades to do a project labor agreement. I think that's, uh, very significant, but as me, as a AFL-CIO, union member, I'm just saddened that I'm split with my brothers and sisters that wearing red, that's why I wear a red shirt, but at the same time, we need jobs, we need inclusion, and Building Trades jobs are very critical to the communities, as, as, as is, uh, other folks. I mean, I'm gonna speak right dead to the middle. I see us going to a battle at City Council. Why? Thank you. So I do support this project.
Reverend, Reverend Smart, come on up, Reverend Smart. Brandy Salcedo.
Greetings, Mr. Chairman and other members of the City Council of this great committee. I'm pre-president of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Southern California. We're concerned about this project simply because the developer has not offered card check agreement, and card check agreement is one of the ways that we, African-Americans can get into the hospitality industry, because when it becomes a union hotel, there's a, there's already language and contracts that allows hotels and a committee to reach out to get more African-Americans. We are disproportionately out of this industry. This is an opportunity, but you're setting a dangerous precedence when you allow these hotels to start coming into our city, our great city, this way. I hope that you would reconsider and make the developer go back and put in the language that African-Americans who are disproportionately unemployed in this city can get good jobs. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bambi Salcedo, and I am, uh, the president and CEO of the TransLatino Coalition. We are a national advocacy organization, and we're standing here before you to renounce and to decline the proposal that has been put up by R.D. Olson. Please, look around. Look at, over that side. That's privilege, power, and they want to come into our neighborhoods to instigate violence. The violence, the institutional violence that we continue to experience as LGBTQ community, and particularly trans people in this Hollywood area. It is important that we, as government officials, invest in the needs of the people who are homeless. There's 40% of individuals who are LGBTQ in the city of Hollywood, and there's no investment into their livelihood, there's no investment, investment into their betterment of their lives. So I ask that you do the right thing if you believe in social justice, and really tell these people that they need to go somewhere else.
Q?
Pastor Q, the Church Without Walls, Skid Row, and, um, here on behalf of Clue. We are living in serious times. We have a worsening homeless crisis because we have a jobless crisis. We don't have a housing crisis, we have an affordable housing crisis. We have a jobless crisis and an affordable hous-housing crisis, and this company refuses to commit to help us address those issues. Business for strictly profit is not business that benefits the community. If projects like this will not hire our folks, where will the jobs come from? On a long-term basis, where will we work? As clergy, we cannot continue to say to our folks, our jobless folks have hope, when hope never comes home. And thus, this committee should re, uh, uh, accept the appeal, reject the project.
I have someone, it's like Dee Hart, H-A-R-T. And Reverend Frank Wolf.
My name is Fatima, I believe you just called me.
Yes, let's make it happen.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Fatima Murrieta, and I've worked as a union hotel worker in Hollywood for the past five years. I'm here today to urge the committee to approve my appeal and send this project back full, full EIR. I oppose this project as it's currently proposed. This project undermines vital environmental protections. Is your commitment to develop for developers' sake, or is your commitment to the community? I believe it's your responsibility to oppose this project as it's currently proposed. We want, uh, development in this district that respects a standard that I have worked for, that my coworkers have worked for. It's prime Hollywood real estate, and I believe other developers would come in to respect our standard. It's time that we make a difference in Hollywood. We cannot allow for those vital protections to go, um, unwitnessed, and we need you to take leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Parsons, you're next. Come on, yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Hart. Thank you to the council. I am a native Los Angelino. I was born in Hollywood, and I have a special feeling for that city, and I was one of the millions who marched for the Women's March. And this company with its association with Legatus is wrong. The CEO has been a member of Legatus, he was a member of the board, and believe me, leopards don't change their spots, as we all know. I vote, I vote with my money, and I vote with my vote, and I don't, you, I don't go to companies like Hobby Lobby or Domino's Pizza, because I have a certain feeling that I don't want to give them money so they can promote anti-women issues. I hope that you also will vote with your hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Frank Wolf. I'm the pastor of the Echo Park United Methodist Church, and I'm here with Clergy and Leitie United for Economic Justice. I'm here because we cannot have development just for the sake of the developers. I believe that we need to make sure that when a developer comes into our community, and there are many that want to come into our community, that the benefits that they are bringing to the community are going to outweigh the downside. And what we have not seen from R.D. Olson at this point is, is, is some kind of evidence. We have not seen the community benefits agreement that we want to ensure that, that the benefits that are gonna come to the Hollywood community, come to the whole Los Angeles community, are gonna outweigh the disadvantages that come from, from traffic, that come from noise, that come from pollution associated with this particular, uh, with this particular development. And so we are here today, I am here today to ask you to, to approve the appeal and to, and to force R.D. Olson to go back to do the kind of work that it needs to do to be able to show us that this development really is for the benefit of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, my name is Jones. I've been in Los Angeles since I was four, and I have to say, this project is bad for L.A. residents. The committee should approve the appeals and send this project back to the full environmental impact report, because the development for developers' sake is bad policy against public interest. Our environmental laws need to be properly enforced. R.D. Olson needs to improve this project, take real steps to undo the harms they caused to our LGBTQ brothers, sisters, and siblings, need to give back to our community. The potential for hazardous materials on the site is not adequately addressed by the MND. Mitigation are not supposed to be deferred until after the project is approved. This project needs a full environmental impact report. The Plumb Committee should accept the appeals and reject this project. Reject this project and stand with the people of this city.
Mr. Donald, Reverend Donald Wilson, Al Farmer, Ted Jimenez, and Father Richard Estrada.
My name is Al Farmer. Uh, I'm a resident of CD 13, and I oppose this R.D. Olson project. The committee should accept the appeal by, uh, by the L.A. Film School and Robert Mazuriegos and send this project back for a full EIR. Uh, this committee is allowed to make findings about public safety and the general welfare and necessity, and that was before you, and you should look at it again, and you should make those findings in approving this appeal. Uh, this project needs a full EIR. The people of this city deserve far better, a far better deal from companies that want to take advantage of what we have created here and the safe communities that we have created here for the LGBT community. You should accept the appeal. This project needs a full EIR.
Thank you.
I'm here this afternoon to say to you, do not approve this hotel project unless there is community benefits, such as local hiring and living- there is community benefits such as local hiring and living wages. My name is Father Richard Estrada. I'm an Episcopal priest of the Diocese of Los Angeles. I've been involved with the labor 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 union for a movement for a long, long time. And I've been involved in immigrant, the immigrant rights movement for a long time. I'm the founder and the president of Hoveness Inc., a youth homeless program. And I see that there are so many homeless that need these opportunities to be trained to work on projects such as this. So if there is no guarantee-
Thank you, Father, that's your time.
-in the contract, don't do it.
Thank you.
Ted Jimenez with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, representing not only the carpenters but the PLA that's attached to this project. PLA is about responsibility, it's about a livable wage, it's about a project that's doing the right thing in regards to that. I have with me carpenters who are here in that support, and anybody else behind me who wishes to stand up and show that support for this project to continue through, I want you to see that even though they're not speaking, I speak on not only their behalf, but many others who are looking forward to working on this project. Please approve the project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Reverend Donald Wilson, chaplain of Unite Here, organizing director of our diversity program. And Unite Here in the forefront, we are for diversity. For eleven and a half years, we've been working on trying to reintegrate African Americans back into the hotel industry. And we're against this project if we can't get a previous agreement that they will hire African Americans back into this industry at a time that we had these jobs. Not that we're trying to force the current workforce out, but we want to be inclusive in these good middle-class paying jobs. And this what adds harm to the community when we don't have a place to work and we got African Americans who do want to work, and we're currently training a diverse group now, a culinaryians at our kitchen right now, and that's where I'm coming from now. But we're tired of being shut out of this industry. We want to be put back into this industry and Unite Here is standing with us on this. And we are against this project unless we have a previous agreement that you will hire African Americans back into this industry. Thank you.
Reverend Alton, Reverend Carey, Guillermo Torres, Ron Miller.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Alton. I'm an Episcopal priest. My church and my home are in Echo Park, and I travel frequently that section of Sunset Boulevard between 101 and this development. And the traffic is already atrocious. And I am not moved by the argument that other developments have had exceptions to their zoning. We don't need more, we need less of that. We heard that the H and HHH will be coming before this committee soon. These kinds of developments are working against what we are trying to do in the city on behalf of the homeless. This kind of high-income development is not helping. I spent time in the office of R.D. Olson last year, and there are verbal agreements to do things. There is not the level of trust in this city for verbal agreements. If there are going to be changes to support workers, diverse workers, LGBT workers, we need that in writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Father Tom Carey from the Church of the Epiphany in Lincoln Heights. The highest law, it grieves me not to be standing with my my brothers in the trades unions, but the highest law is that we help each other and we care for each other. And so this R.D. Olson has so far refused to sign a community benefits package. We cannot keep approving these kinds of agreements. We've learned that they don't work, and we do it at the peril of our most vulnerable people, our most vulnerable workers. You know, the resources of this city, the hard work of the workers of Los Angeles are not the property of R.D. Olson. The fire, the police protection, the water are not the property of R.D. Olson, they're the property of the people of this city. We need to demand that they give something back. That's why I support the appeal and ask you to please renegotiate this.
Hello, my name is Guillermo Torres. I'm with Hospitality Training Academy, here with me is Denise and clergy and laity united for economic justice. I want to say that this project as it stands is bad for the residents, and the committee should approve the appeals and send back this project. For example, the trans community faces an unemployment rate of over three times the average in California. Our program is one real concrete solution to helping our trans friends and neighbors overcome bias and bigotry in our society and build sustainable lives for themselves. We work with employers across the region to ensure diversity and local hiring. We receive hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants to make sure African American, Asian Americans, and transgender individuals have access to good careers in the hospitality industry. The committee should stand with the people of Los Angeles against irresponsible development, accept appeal, and reject this project. Just, this means a lot to us, because as you know, there's crisis in our, some of our committees as far as employment, South LA LGBT community. So if you sanction this project as it is, you will be sanctioning indirectly discrimination against some of our community members.
Good evening, Chair, Councilman. I'm Ron Miller, Executive Secretary of the LA Orange County Building Trades, and this is a good project. And it does have local hire, it does have preference for veterans, it does have gender equality. The men and women of the building trades make the same amount, standing shoulder to shoulder on the job site. And we do bring local hire to all the communities in Los Angeles. And as far as hiring African Americans, there's going to be a job fair at the First AME Church on the 26th of August, it's on a Saturday. Please come out and see what the building trades are about. We'll be there.
Is, is, are you telling us this employer's going to be at our job fair?
You never know, he might.
All right.
But there'll be, I'm not so much worried about the employers, I'm worried about the ones that are going to do the training.
All right.
We spend $200 million a year training apprentices, and it's paid for by the men and women of the building trades and the contractors. So that's who pays for our training, and we and we put local people to work, just as we have in each and every one of your communities. So this is a good project, I urge you to support it, and let's get a shovel in the ground. Thank you.
And you have to forgive me, Mr. Tommy from IBW Local 11. Gus Torres. Abel Cortinas.
All right. Good afternoon, Planning Committee. My name is Tommy Falvai. I represent International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Union 11. And I'm here to, you know, talk about local hire. I know the opposition, the naysayers, have been saying that, you know, there is not going to be any local hire on this project or bringing in community benefits agreement to this project. But I just wanted to say, when we negotiate project labor agreements across the county and across across the city, that there's local hire goals. And we've, we've been, you know, successfully been completing these project labor agreements with local hire goals, either setting them or over exceeding them. So I just wanted to say that, you know, our apprentices that are here today, they took their time to come out and support this project from school, and they volunteered to come out here to support this project, to move this forward, because they know how important it is to to move these type of projects forward. So I urge the the Planning Committee to do so.
Thank you.
My name is Gus Torres. I'm here on behalf of 5,000 welders, pipe fitters, and apprentices. And we're all in support of this project, because it brings thousands of good-paying jobs for hard-working men and women of LA. We commend the developer for committing to area wage standards, standards that would allow those who work on the project to provide for their families, health care, and build our local economy. We support the project and we urge you to approve it. Thank you for your time and God bless.
My name is Abel Cortidas on behalf of local sheet metal workers 105. We all have, we all love progress, but progress requires investment. The applicant is willing to turn an underutilized site into a high-class building and has committed to using fair contractors employing our skilled local workforce. This project will also improve the area and is a win-win in every way. We hope the committee will approve the project and give our members the opportunity to advance their careers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Mark Dabaco, Brian Mitchell, and Alvina Beck.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Dabaco. I'm the compliance officer at the Los Angeles Film School. And I want to talk to you about the people that I think are going to be most impacted by this project, and that's our students. We have a student body currently of excess of 2,000. These are creative, talented individuals who are studying to become, and they will become, the future leaders of a very important economic industry to this city, and that is the entertainment industry. They will be the future job creators of this industry. Why do I know that? Because of our alumni base. Our alumni is made up of Oscar nominees, Emmy winners and nominees, Grammy winners and nominees. This Emmy season alone, we have 22 graduates working on 20 different shows that are Emmy-nominated, totaling 136 total Emmy nominations. That's an incredible amount of talent. And I beg you to take their needs to heart. It is incumbent upon the city to take their studies of these serious students and ensure that they will be able to practice their art-
Thank you. That's your time.
...in an environment that is absent of... Thank you.
Great show. Thank you.
How are you doing, Council? My name is Brian Mitchell. I'm the Director of Facilities of the Los Angeles Film School. I just have a few brief remarks as well. It is clear that there's plenty of opposition to this project for various reasons, all which have related to those that are expressing their concerns. As Mr. Dabaco stated, my concern centers around the fact that the film school, being 30 feet away, directly across the street from the proposed site, will be uniquely impacted. Our students, our faculty, our admin staff, classes, events, screening, school operations as a whole will be adversely affected by not only the noise from the construction, but limitations and restrictions on ingress and egress. The R.D. Olson group, quite frankly, has been extremely arrogant and largely dismissive of our concerns and the impact this project will have on the school and the neighboring community. Thank you.
And we're here from CD 13.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Chris Robertson, Planning Director for Councilmember Mitchell Farrell of the 13th District. We are very excited to be here today and strong support of the project. Our office has spent the last three years working closely with the applicant, the community, the LAPD, neighborhood council, local businesses, trusted design professionals, and the construction trades to shape the project that you see before you today. We would like to express our genuine thanks to everyone who has contributed so much time and energy over the years to sculpt the project into an iconic world-class building that will truly benefit our community in many, many ways. Today on Sunset Boulevard, in the heart of Hollywood, steps from the red line, stands a dilapidated drive-through restaurant where only recently, three innocent people were brutally stabbed. With restaurant and retail use at the ground floor, the project will help to activate Sunset, Ivar, and Coinga with pedestrian activity, improving safety, and greatly contributing to the look and feel of the neighborhood. The hotel will bring hundreds of good-paying, skilled, temporary and permanent jobs to Hollywood and millions of dollars in TOT each year. As you've heard, the applicant has also committed to a local hire requirement and is working with Equality California on a job training and placement program to directly benefit our local LGBT community. As we move towards 2028 and the exciting news of the Olympics, it is important to remember that this is exactly the kind of use that we need at exactly the right location. This project is a win-win for Hollywood, the 13th District, and the City of Los Angeles. We respectfully request that you deny the appeals and approve the project with the modified conditions submitted by LAPD. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, colleagues. If there's any discussion or questions. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look for it. In the meantime, we'll hear from our colleagues. Mr. Blumenfeld.
Staff.
Yes. Staff?
Could you provide a little details on the mitigations that are included dealing with the noise during construction? You've heard different things.
Sure, hold on one second, fix your microphone. The letter of decision calls out various noise-related mitigation measures. I won't read them all to you, but there are about six mitigation measures, dealing with reducing construction hours from 6:00, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. To maximum extent, practical demolition and construction activities will be scheduled as to avoid operating several pieces of equipment simultaneously. Other kind, project contractor will use, shall use, power construction equipment, state-of-the-art noise shielding muffling devices. A sound blanket will be erected along the project's northern property line to absorb construction noise levels generated by earth-moving equipment. Signs will be posted at the construction sites. And the applicant will provide a two-week courtesy notice to the surrounding area regarding construction activities.
Even though your mic got cut in half, I think it's still working, so we can hear you. And the number of trips created by the project compared to the previous use?
Sure. Let me get LA DOT's letter. Actually, one sec, one second, please.
And sort of, I guess, more generally, if you, you know, wanted to hear about the traffic management plan and how the trips compare.
LA DOT blessed the traffic plan prepared by the consultant on January 6, 2016. So as, as you guys all know, there is an existing Jack-in-the-Box on-site today. And so DOT has assigned approximately 2,000 trips to that drive-through restaurants. The project itself will create about 2,200 trips. And there's different pass-through credits and whatnot. In terms of a traffic demand plan, there wasn't one assigned per se for the, this project, because it wasn't required mitigation measure, but the applicant team, I think, could speak further to that.
Okay. Get from them on that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Claire Look Yeager. I'm a principal with the firm of Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan Engineers. I've been with the company about 30 years and I'm a licensed traffic engineer with the state. I've had my license since 1966. Our firm prepared the traffic impact study for the proposed project. Prior to commencement, we met with Department of Transportation, looked at the number of intersections, looked at the trip generation, and had sign-off on all of the parameters prior to conducting the analysis. To specifically answer your question, in the weekday AM commuter peak hours, so that's the single highest hour in the morning, this project is expected to result in a net increase of 77 vehicle trips. It's a little more than one a minute. In the weekday PM peak hour, which is the single highest hour in the afternoon, this project is just over 100 vehicle trips. We analyzed existing conditions, future pre-project conditions, future conditions assuming full development of 69 other development projects currently on the books within the city. We looked at the differences, and based on the city's adopted significance thresholds, we did not report a finding of a significant traffic impact. There is congestion, many of the commenters have noted, queuing congestion. In fact, on Coinga and Sunset, as I'm sure you're very familiar, it's a posted anti-gridlock zone by the city, which does acknowledge congested conditions. If- zone by the city, which does acknowledge congested conditions. If this project, think of it as tripping the trigger, we would have reported a significant traffic impact. And last but not least, I know a lot of the commenters have requested a full environmental impact report. I would like to say that the traffic impact study prepared would be the same if it were for a negative declaration, a mitigated negative declaration, or a full environmental impact report. So the study would be the same. Department of Transportation did review and clear the study, as was mentioned by staff, and I'm available for any additional questions.
Appreciate that answer, and some additional questions as well, Mr.? Wanted to deal maybe with the staff or the applicant, not so much on the traffic issue, but what is the applicant doing to ensure that hiring and operations are not tinged with discrimination and that does not become an issue? We've heard a lot of different things, and I want to address that head-on, and both the discrimination issue and the, and the local hire issue.
In our preview, purview, for the Department of City Planning and for the commission, it is hard to address sort of the social aspects and labor aspects related to projects. So our focus is sort of on the land use aspect and, and the impacts the traffic or the project would have on the environment. In terms of other agreements reached, I would, once again, defer to the applicant team to talk about how they're going to address the different issues that were brought up from the public regarding sort of social and labor and hiring practices.
Okay.
Pardon me, Mr. Sir in the red hat, please do not make any more noise while you're in this hearing. Thank you. You'll be asked to leave otherwise. Would you please leave the meeting if our personnel can help escort him out? Thank you.
My name is Tony Rozek, Vice President with R.D. Olson Development, the applicant. And regarding first, local hire, the PLA specifically addresses local hire in the form of zip codes that we will recruit construction employees or the trades will recruit construction employees from, which is local. In our planning commission presentation, we made a commitment to hire at least 50% of hospitality employees from the City of Los Angeles, and we're prepared to follow through with that commitment. Relating to the LGBT community, we are working very closely with Equality California to form a jobs fair and hiring program in which they will be an integral part and assist us along that process.
Will that be ready prior to this count, this vote coming to council?
It can be, yes.
Okay. Certainly, if this moves forward, I'd like to see that, at least in writing, before the, the council vote would be ideal.
Understood. Absolutely.
Okay. And in terms of other ways to prevent discrimination or future issues on that in terms of the, the use down the road, is there any other guarantees that we have?
We don't have a history of discrimination from employees, and I can commit just to being a respectable employer that issues like that will be avoided and would not occur.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I don't want to hog up those questions. One more, but for the city attorney, for the city attorneys here on this, which is, if there was a developer who we didn't like, we didn't like their viewpoint, or we felt that they were anti-LGBT, is that, can we legally make that a reason for denying an application?
Terry Kaufman, Macia City Attorney's Office. This is a, a land use entitlement, so you're guided by the charter, the findings in the code, Nexus requirements for conditions, and the, all the findings, and that's what you have to focus on, and it, it focuses on the, the project and its impacts on land and not on individuals.
And is, is there a risk of litigation if we were to focus on the individual?
Well, that, that, that's not a, a proper basis to address a land use entitlement. That's before you.
It's just, it's just a question.
Well, that's, that's the answer.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chair, thank you very much. We've heard a lot from a lot of people. We've heard from, first, the appellant, the applicant, with the description and the overview of the project. We've heard from arguments from the community for and against, from the labors as well as other interest groups for the operation. So we've heard, we've heard from a lot. We haven't yet, I don't know if there's somebody from the council district here to speak as well, but I didn't, I just didn't know if you planned on addressing this body again.
Yes, above, beyond what I already said.
Yeah, anything beyond foreclosing. And then, because I did have some questions for the, for the applicant, but I wanted to see, based on all the testimony and everything you've heard, is there anything-
Well, regarding the, the accusations of discrimination, I mean, as, as you know, the councilman is a gay man, and he's researched this issue thoroughly. If you felt that there was any legitimate basis to these accusations, we would probably not be standing where we are at today. We've partnered with Equality California and Stonewall Democratic Club. There's overwhelming support from both those organizations committed to LGBTQ issues, as well as support from our neighborhood council, like I said.
I've got a question for you, and you may or may not be able to answer this because I'm going to ask you of your opinion, not necessarily the opinion of the council office. Like, oh, no, don't ever do that. All right. So, and Mr. Spindler, you're going to make another noise. I'm going to ask you to be dismissed out as well. Do you understand? Thank you. So with that, I think it's my first time, and I've been on this committee for a number of years, that I've ever heard an argument as such. And being that we have an openly gay council member who is very supportive of not only LGBT requirements but equal and transparent access to everything, not just jobs. For anybody to make those accusations, would it be, in your opinion, that it was strictly political to try to stop this project because of who that particular person is that represents this district?
We have seen no basis for their allegations.
Okay. Smart answer. All right. With that, careful tap dance on that one. Because I, for one, whoever has been putting those allegations out there, I'm appalled that they would actually, for me, that's almost a personal attack. It is a personal attack to make those kind of allegations when there's no facts to back it up, when it's addressing somebody's character and their belief system. That, to me, is shocking. And I just want to go on the record that those kinds of tactics and not fighting things on the merit, it's just wrong. I mean, that's just not who we are, and I had to address that. So I appreciate that, and sorry to put you on the spot on it. I know I had my answer for it, and, and I think we can, we have enough arguments on every project, being SEQA, traffic, noise, all those things that fall under SEQA, highest and best use on a project, people are arguing over housing versus commercial. We have enough to argue about, guys. But to bring in these kinds of accusations, just to go to the heart of because of the person who represents this district is, I think was just wrong. And I just want to put that out there. It's really, it's really disgusting. Having said that, what we haven't yet heard is from the applicant to address, we heard some of the questions that were brought up by Councilmember Blumenfeld, but we haven't heard the applicant address some of the arguments that were brought forward by the appellant. So I'd like to hear back from the, from the applicant. I mean, I thought it was very cute in your opening to say that you sometimes are hungry on Sunset Boulevard, used to stop by the Taco Bell, but in all seriousness, Mr. Gaines, what, some of the things they addressed, such as we have a housing need, this doesn't provide that. Some of the issues that weren't asked and not answered, if you can just go over some of the, some of the things that Mr. Krakoff opened with in his arguments, that this doesn't create a single job, if, if I can paraphrase his opening arguments in Los Angeles by building this project. I don't know how you build a project without creating a job. So if you can address some of those arguments, I'd like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilman. The, first of all, there's a Jack-in-the-Box restaurant on the site that has about 30, 40 employees. We're going to employ several hundred people during a one-to-two-year construction process. You've heard about the PLA that we've entered into and the support of that community. And then the hotel will have between 150, 200 permanent jobs. So in that, in terms of jobs, those are the facts. They're undisputed. We're not, there's no difference of, of opinion on this. What I ask you to, to think about with regard to the other issues, what you have here is a SEQA challenge. You have two appellants that have come here and told you that the SEQA document is not correct, that this has been done on an MND and it should be an EIR. What you haven't heard is what they want. Well, you haven't heard two things. One, you haven't really heard any opposition to the project.
Mr. Gaines, what I've asked you to do is address the fact that not, they're arguing SEQA. They're suggesting that this should have been an EIR versus an MND. So if you could, give an answer to that. Thank you.
And, and, and that's what I'm doing. The, the MND that we've done, and first of all, we, this is the city's MND. We prepare it, the city approves it, goes through it, and determines what the appropriate document is. No time where we ask from anyone but the city, all the way through the City Planning Commission, to do an EIR. Think about what are the impacts of this project? One argument was it's so big that it needs an EIR. That is not the rule under SEQA. The SEQA is, are there impacts that are not mitigated? So what impacts did you hear about? You heard about traffic, and frankly, we're saved on this project and traffic because we're taking out a very busy fast-food restaurant that has a very high traffic. We get a lot of credit for the existing traffic. So when you look at the incremental traffic, you heard in great detail what the answer to that question is and how we don't trip the thresholds. What other SEQA issues would you have? The rest of the issues that you've heard about are all temporary construction issues, noise and truck, truck trips. That's, you know, let's talk about what are the legitimate issues. So the question is, do you do an EIR because for a period of time during construction, you're going to have some noise impacts? You were told that we've completely ignored the noise impacts. In fact, we've done noise studies, they've done noise studies, all of the mitigations that have been requested have been included in those studies. We actually thought that we had negotiated a resolution of that, and then literally at 6 o'clock last night, were asked for several hundred thousand dollars in cash in addition, and that agreement did not come to be from the, from the film school that is concerned about the noise. But that does not mean that the mitigations resulting from the studies, including the responses to comments from there, are included, because they are included. And the, the other issue really would be the truck trips, because they're, we're going to, we're going to have a four-story underground garage, and we're going to excavate and haul the dirt out. And so, and again, we have met all of the criteria. We have specific conditions of how many trucks a day, how many, you know, only two trucks can be in the, on the site at any time, that they can't queue up, that'll, you know, it's one of those, as you know, it's one of those battles with, do you do it as fast as you can and get it over with, which involves more trucks? Or do you limit the number of trucks and then it takes longer? We're doing what the, what we all, what we usually do in the city, which is we limit the number of trucks so that they're not causing congestion, they can only be two at a time, and we're meeting all of those requirements. So what else would you get with an EIR? You, you haven't heard, you haven't even heard any complaints about an EIR, and you haven't today been asked for any specific condition of approval. So we have two appellants claiming SEQA who haven't stood here and said, we want to add a condition of approval. We want this additional noise mitigation or this additional truck mitigation. Because if you did, you could add it, you might not even have an objection from, from, from us, because we have already added every mitigation that's been asked for in our reports and in the reports that have come through the comment period.
Great. Thank you. And that's what I wanted you to address, because you had your opening describing the project. By the way, yeah, I was going to ask you, but it's irrelevant. I mean, you've got 132 traditional guest rooms, 142 guest suites, and one two-bedroom. Anyway, that's a fascinating mixture, but that's not really for this conversation. So with that, now we've heard from the description of the project, both appellants, council office, the community, the local stakeholders, and the applicant's response to the arguments from both appellants. That's what I was hoping to hear. With that, colleagues, I'd like to, for you, to entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, that we deny the appeal in part and approve it in part, and that the part change is that the conditions of the, and before we vote on this, and I get a second, let me just get it out there, that we approve the conditions that were asked for by the Los Angeles Police Department. I think there were one or two minor conditions that, that were in there. We got a second, but let's not vote. If I could, this gentleman did ask earlier and had his hand up-
Yes.
-but I just saw it again.
Yes.
So before we vote, did we find his card?
Yeah, we found his card. He was one of the, he was in the-
I saw you out of the corner of my eye. I got you.
Just one minute.
Appreciate it. So, my name is Roberto Masariegos. I'm an East Side Hollywood resident, and I worked in Studio City at a union hotel. But I'm here today because, I mean, it's just funny to see that you have one side stand up and approve the project, and then you have one side here just listening to what we got going on, right? I'm not going to talk about the legal-specific details of taking it back and reviewing it because all that, everybody had said it. But what I do want to say is that in Hollywood, I'll take anybody's business card so I can put some voluntary time and give you a tour of what we got going on in Hollywood and what we need. That's housing, good, real jobs, in writing, not $1,000 scholarships. Come on. Community college tuition is like-
Please address, sir. Please address.
So my, my point is, please, think about this. We're not in the time where we're going to try to protect ourselves and just take one group here and one group over there. We're in the time that we need to come together and realize that good developing is just development. And get everybody involved. That's it. Thank you.
That's your time. So, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Yes?
So, the, the action will be to grant in part, deny in part, as modified by the conditions that were submitted to the clerk by LAPD, and then also to deny the two appeals-
Correct.
-and three, to adopt the MND, the mitigation measures, and the mitigation monitoring program and SEQA findings.
And I actually want to ask CD 13 staff and developer about an additional change. So the, so you all just stood at the podium on the record and on the record committed to 50% local hire for the hospitality staff? That, that happened?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Fred Gaines, on behalf of R.D. Olson Development, yes.
So, could, is it appropriate to make that a, is it appropriate to make that a-
Condition?
Condition?
Yes, we would be supportive of that. It is a, we would defer to city attorneys as to how they would want to memorialize-
Well, I would, I would suggest if you're going to make it a condition, it'd be filed as a minimum of a 25-year covenant on the property.
But all the conditions get filed.
Well, I know, but we'd add this then as a condition rather than just a letter.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
So, thank you.
Great.
So, all right. So there we are. So, approved without objection.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our business for today. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Councilmen, do you have public comments?
No. None. No.